Imagine similar to Ampersand and Canalas, if we could do about two minutes each, that'll keep us on track. And so Sylvia, if you would start.
Wow, no pressure. Thanks, Mayor. Hello, everybody. My name is Sylvia Correo. I have been in Sunset Valley for a little, now thirteen months, actually. Feels a lot longer than any given day. I've been in the public sector, both local government and nonprofit, for over twenty years. I would probably venture to tell you fifteen of those in executive or administrative level positions. Marketing is not my forte. They don't teach you that at City Manager's School. So I'm excited for you guys to be on board. I know about development and economic development, but nothing about marketing. So thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Phil, since I see you have a hot mic, would you go next?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for their time. My name is Phil Elliott. I've been a council member now for almost two years. My wife and I have lived in Sunset Valley for almost four years. I'm currently an angel investor in technology companies and a real estate investor in residential and commercial properties. Prior to that, I was CEO or president of publicly traded companies involved in the technology industry, and both in the US, North America, and also in Europe, and specialize in restructuring companies, development of B2B marketing plans, and development of sales channels. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Elliott. And from there, Councilmembers, if you will just unmute and jump in.
Hi there. This is Wanda Reitz talking. I have lived in Sunset Valley since 2015, although I lived for twenty years by the mall, and so I have shopped in Sunset Valley for many, many years, ever since Home Depot opened. So this is my first year on the council, and I am the Budget and Finance. And my background is I've been an HR manager, I'm an accountant, and I'm also the managing partner of a group of Jiffy Lubes. And that is probably my very limited experience with marketing, has been with the Jiffy Lubes. I've been, as a franchisee, I am, we have national advertising, but we're also responsible for local advertising. So I've done some backyard types of advertising with like Facebook, Waze, Google, that type of thing. So I'm somewhat familiar with that. I will not say that I am an expert at all. So, but I'm excited about what y'all can bring to the table, and I'm excited to learn what y'all have. Thank you.
And hi, this is Karen. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Karen.
Thank you. So I've been on council for one year, Karen Medikas. I live on Pillow Road. After school, I worked in graphic arts and the newspaper business, and then spent over forty years in the animal welfare field, working with NGOs, local, state, and governments nationwide. My facilitation background is in strategic planning, appreciative inquiry, and personality type indicators, along with fundraising. I've been a resident of Sunset Valley for twenty-three years. My volunteer service in Sunset Valley includes seventeen years on the zoning commission. I'm a founding member of the Arts Commission, and I spent three years on the Planning and Environmental Committee, and now my first year as a city council member. Currently retired and focusing on my jewelry business now, and my metalsmithing art projects. Looking forward to working with y'all.
Thank you, Karen. Do we have any, Sylvia, did we ever get Rudy, or do we know what happened to Rudy?
Don't have Rudy. I'm in the process of texting her. I re-sent her the link just a bit ago.
Okay, great. So I'll keep moving through, and then if she, Ampersand, if she shows up, we can stop and let her introduce herself. And I will go, and since we do have two of the three candidates, just to give y'all a fair warning. Oh, yes, Melissa, too. And Melissa, you have, good, you have a hot mic. So after Melissa, I will go, and then to give Rob and Mark a heads up. Since you guys are on the ballot, I'm going to have both of you introduce yourselves, too, since there's a likelihood you may be working with Ampersand. And then again, we'll circle back to Rudy if she's here. So Melissa, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Melissa Gonzalez, I've lived in Sunset Valley for over twenty-two years now, and I've been involved in Sunset Valley committees all that time, including marketing committees, CED, Public Works, Budget and Finance, all of those, and a whole bunch of ad hocks. And so I've done a fair amount of the work with the branding in the city when it's come up, over the course of those years. I worked as a, as a small business owner, and I had for about twenty-seven years in my latest company. And I, in that time, had stores in three different Austin neighborhoods, and in each of those times, I also volunteered on, usually as, as president or chair of the neighborhood business groups in each of those areas. And we did a lot of branding. We worked with GSDM to brand the West End-Austin Alliance. We did a lot of smart growth projects with the city. We created a neighborhood plan, I think the first one that was ever done for businesses for the West End, where we did surveys with the City of Austin and created those plans. We branded Money Magazine, said that the, the area that we branded as the South First was one of the top ten, ranked number eight in the country. And let's see, so, so we're taking on the Townlike, Townlike Master, Townlike Triangle Project, the Townlike Master Plan, and yeah, mostly the West End. And those, and some charity projects with GSDM, doing some branding stuff as well. So that's probably my background. I'm the, I'm happy to be involved, if people want me to be involved after I get off council, but I'm due off in November. So I'm, I'm a short timer in the core group. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And Rudy, I see that you're here. Oh, there's your mic. I'm gonna give you, or I'm gonna unmute you first. Hi, Councilmember Rosen Garden. Are you ready to do a little introduction of yourself, or do you need a minute? You are self-muted.
Who's doing the introduction?
So Ampersand did their introductions, and then they asked that all of the council members go through and do a quick introduction of who you are, who you are to Sunset Valley, and what secret powers you might have to be helpful to the relationship that we have with Ampersand.
Okay. I am Councilmember Rosen Garden, and I've been on council for a couple of years now. And I've been on the Finance and Budget Committee. So I work with numbers a lot. Dollars are very important, that they stay in the city's coffers. And I was on the Community and Economic Development Committee, and I go to every Public Works Committee I can possibly attend. I think I missed one. I care about this city. I want this city to be sustainable and to be, now coming into marketing, have more vibrancy. There's, I, this little jewel can be a vibrant city. And I think we can make magic happen if given more, allowing more people to be creative. And in my line of work, I make things happen. I deal with vendors all the time. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosen Garden. I will introduce myself, and then I will, I see all three of our other candidates are here. So I'm currently the mayor. I'm on the ballot this year to run for a council seat. So you may see me leave, you may see me stay. I've lived in Sunset Valley since 2008, 2009, can't remember exactly. Prior to that, I lived in and around and shopped in Sunset Valley from around 2001, which is when I graduated from Southwestern University in Georgetown, Texas. And then that brought me to Austin, which is where I worked in international education for a study abroad company called ISA. So I did a lot of work on UT campus and with other campuses all over the United States and high schools. So I was the admissions director and site director for all of their Latin America programs. So through that, I did a lot of travel into Latin America and a lot of work with young people, which was wonderful. And when I plateaued at that company, I moved on to law school. I'm currently a boutique law owner, which I've been operating for about ten years successfully, which is exciting to be a sole practitioner that can make it. I specialize in collaborative divorces, which are far and few between, and immigration work. I work on legal pathway immigration. And then my third niche is small business. And so in the last couple of years, most, if not, I'd say at least eighty percent of my work is doing contract-based or temporary full-time in-house council work or operational work, which includes HR work, legal advising for startup companies. And I have been volunteering in Sunset Valley since 2008. Planning and environmental and public safety were the areas that I enjoyed, where I enjoyed volunteering prior to getting onto council. And I've been on council since 2009, both as council member and then as mayor. And I am very excited to have a new marketing firm. I think there's lots of opportunity in Sunset Valley that has gone untapped for the entire time that I've known Sunset Valley. And with that, I will unmute our candidates and introduce each of them. So we do have four candidates on the ballot this year. As I said, I'm on the ballot for a council position, and then we have Rob Johnson, who I will unmute, and I will let Rob introduce himself. Rob?
Hi, yep, I'm Rob Johnson. I live on Reece Drive. Been here for ten years. I run my own software services company. And before moving to Sunset Valley, I worked in media and advertising in New York and London. And my, my goal, if elected to stay council, and I'll probably be involved anyway, if not, if not elected, is to kind of like get out of the pros way, ask questions where I see fit, and kind of go like, give my perspective on technology, because that's my strong suit. That's it.
Thank you. And then our other candidate for council position is Alfonso Carmona. So Alfonso, you are now unmuted. If you'd like to introduce yourself?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. My name is Alfonso Carmona. I have thirteen years living here in Sunset Valley. I am so happy that we have our retail business is very, very important for us now. Then we are looking now for a professional marketing firm that will give it to us some good, good results. I am so happy that they are coming. I hear that they are five members of the team, and they plan to do a lot of things. It's nice to start at this moment, in this difficult situation of the pandemic. So at this moment, will be a real, real experience for you to explore all your experience, because for us as citizens, we will value. Thank you for being here, and nice to meet you.
Thank you, Alfonso. And next are our two candidates for the mayoral position. And one, you already heard his introduction, and that's Councilmember Elliott. And so he is running for mayor. And then our second candidate is Mark Bruner. And Mark, if you'd like to introduce yourself?
All right, thank you. Yes, my name is Mark Bruner. I'm candidate for mayor. I previously have been on council for four years, and prior to that, I was a part of a number of committees. So my experience volunteering with Sunset Valley goes back to when we moved here, essentially, which was in 2013. Really love the city. It's been, you know, it's been a really great place to live and raise our family. So I hold a lot of the, the kind of key elements of what we're driving for, you know, near and dear to my heart, to keep our city improved and sustainable. My background's professional life, I'm, I primarily, for the past twenty years or so, I've been managing software teams, mostly for federal government contracts, most recently in my role at, in my work at UT Austin, where I, I'm a project director for the Office of Vice President for Research. So we do a lot of kind of major software projects that are research-related, but not marketing research. I'm, I'm very kind of keen to understand that aspect of this. So my background is not marketing at all. It's, it's just, you know, more in program management and, and team management. So looking forward to hearing more about, you know, the process and getting to know what Ampersand and brings forward us. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Ampersand, you've now heard from all of the sitting elected officials and from all of the elected officials who may transition in. And so thank you for all the candidates for showing up tonight and proving me right in what I told Ampersand, which is they should have a smooth transition post-election. Everybody you've heard from tonight, they're all very committed to the city. And as you heard, Councilmember Gonzalez say, I do anticipate that all of the current elected officials are willing to be as involved or not involved as you need. And so Cindy, what I would ask of you now is, did we give you what you needed, or is there anything else, since you are kind of wanting this to be a bit of a roundtable where you're getting to know us? Is there anything more you'd like to know from the elected officials before you move on with your presentation?
No, that was absolutely fabulous. I think we got a really good snapshot of who's at the table and their passion for this particular place and project. And yeah, I think we can, we can move into part two of the client download.
You might need to spell that out.
So, okay. Can, can you guys hear me? Every, am I still?
We can. You, you hear you very clearly.
Okay, great. So in this next section, we would just like you guys to speak freely regarding how you think Sunset Valley has changed in the last decade. As you heard a minute ago, everyone on our team has been here for a while, so we're familiar with Sunset Valley. We, one of the reasons we wanted to respond to your RFP is because we also live, work nearby and shop there. And I think we've always recognized that Sunset Valley was this little enclave, sort of surrounded by these places that Austin gets a lot of credit for. And we, I, we've, like you, always seen the potential of it. But we don't have the details, not at the level you do, about how things have changed, how things have developed, really what, what's the skinny on how things have moved and, and grown over time. And so we would love for you guys to speak to that. I'm taking copious notes as you all are talking, and I'm sure other members of our team are as well. And then just also speak to, what are your priorities moving forward? Like I said before, we have a very good idea of the deliverables that we need to bring to the table at the end of this process. But understanding when you might move forward with additional development for things like public spaces, when there might be, or if there's going to be more hotels in the plan in the future. We know we need to get people back to spend money and to increase sales tax revenues for the existing businesses. But if you can paint a picture about what the future business development plan might be for us, that would be helpful as well.
And this is Jeff. I think the snapshot that we would love to hear is, where have you been and where are you wanting to go?
Okay. And Jeff and Cindy, if you're okay, what I'm seeing is that we, there aren't that many additional people here this evening. And to be consistent with what we just did, I'd like to be able to include those three, the three candidates that are here this evening. And so what I'm actually going to do, and then beyond those three candidates, what I'm seeing is that we only have two other residents, Michael Moore and Penny Seidel, and they are both members of our Community and Economic Development Committee. So they played a large role in vetting and helping us select you all. So actually, what I'm going to do is unmute everybody. So warning, I'm about to unmute you all. So if you have something, mute yourselves. And then let's just play it by ear and let people take turns offering some insight to what Cindy and Jeff just asked for. So if you have a hot mic, jump in as you, as you'd like.
Hearing nothing. I'm gonna go ahead and start.
And actually, Phil, you're notorious for not muting yourself. Would you please, Sylvia or I are gonna mute you if we hear you pouring cocktails in the background. So.
Well, I wish I was pouring cocktails, but this is more important than that. And I actually have had myself on mute. So, but thank you for the warning. I appreciate it.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Rosen Garden.
Oh, hearing no one else, I just, this is Councilmember Rosen Garden, and I apologize earlier. I forgot that my fan was going on while I was talking. But moving forward, I would, I would think that doing more within the retail, doing more activities with the retail. When I was on the CED and beyond, we used to do Halloween events within the city. We were over by the retail, handing out candy, doing pictures and so on with Halloween. And we also used to do, and still have done, except this last year, Santa's pictures, where Santa Claus, it was, I'm so sorry, Public Works, Planning and Environmental, can't even think of her name right now. She's staff member. Her dad would dress up as Santa Claus, and we would have visitors come, and those who were in the shopping center would get a chance to have pictures with Santa Claus. That has gone by the wayside. Now, I'm not saying that that's totally gone. I don't know if they're planning on doing it next year. I think we could do more with the barn, from the homestead barn. And I think the farmer's market, doing something more grand with the farmer's market, having it closer to the retail. So how can the marketing company instill something of more activity within the retail area, utilizing the barn, utilizing areas near the retail, making it more of an event place, a place you want to come to? Thank you.
Hi, this is Phil. Can I, do I have an open mic now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Hi, here's my thoughts. We in Sunset Valley enjoy a very cherished lifestyle. We, we're surrounded by wonderful open spaces, trails. We have a relatively low cost of living here based on services and taxation basis. And we are totally dependent, almost totally dependent on revenue. For a retail engine that generates about $300 million in sales is just around the corner. In many ways, I think COVID has accelerated some of the trends we see out there, you know, online shopping, move away from traditional brick and mortar. And I'm concerned that we put into place a long-term strategy that allows us to continue this lifestyle. You know, I think the message I would get is sometimes you have to change to preserve the status quo. I'm fortunate that I still have contact at senior levels in the retail industry, and they don't have, have the answers as to what the future will look like. They are grasping at many different things in order to, to get the retail back to where they want it to be. So I think my concern is, what do we do to enhance our visibility as a retail destination? What can we do to work with retailers to make sure that they're, we're doing everything we can for them? And what can we do to attract a new business? If we were to attract a business of the size of a forty, forty million dollar business, as an example, that would generate $800,000 a year in revenue to us. And I think the CED committee very early on identified that one of the elements that should be a focus is the business-to-business path. How can we get people to set up a retail store, you know, a well-respected retail organization to come here? So those are my thoughts. Those are my concerns. And I think it's a big, no one, I think, has the answer. We have to listen. We have to learn. We have to try different strategies. And only with that, I think, can we then put out a plan that makes sense and tackles the major. And I think we must be prepared to constantly review it and modify it based on the feedback and the experience we get. But that's my thoughts.
This is Councilmember Reitz. I've got a few thoughts I want to express. So as I mentioned, I have been shopping in Sunset Valley probably twenty-plus years. And, and there are reasons why I've, I've shopped here, even though I wasn't a resident for fifteen of those. And part of it, I think, is the type of retail we have. Some of the stores like Home Depot and Academy and Kohl's are just, they're anchors here. And so that, and I, I think that's important to recognize. But I also think what's important to recognize is that Sunset Valley also has a number of retail shops that are very unique shopping experiences. And they are, they're like home goods, where you have to go into the store and actually walk around and do the shopping there. It's not a online presence so much. And that is, that's key for our sales tax collections. We'd have to get people back into the stores. And I think we have a number of stores, retail locations, that are very unique. So I think that unique finds is a, is a good sell for Sunset Valley. Also, I want to have you put on the back burner a little bit is, last council meeting, Councilmember Elliott and I introduced, and the council approved, a study for the homestead property. That is the property that is behind La Madeline's. It's a beautiful green space, and it's got some deed restrictions, and there may be environmental restrictions. So we are in the process now of starting that, where we will look at any environmental problems or in any deed restrictions to get around, with the idea of being, that we develop a beautiful public space that attracts citizens, or people to our city, but also they are, it's a community gathering spot also. So that is still clearly in development. We need to get through the legal and the environmental first before we can really push that project along. But that is something I'd really like you to keep on your back burner and understand that this is a possibility.
Councilwoman Reitz, we definitely want to hear more about that. And we, we, if you don't mind me interrupting, we do have a question really quick about that.
This is Jeff. My curiosity about that is whether or not there might be a stage for live music where people could gather and be entertained and be a draw for pulling people into Sunset Valley.
And my question is, is there a timeline? I know you've got to go through a process, but is there sort of something on the horizon for, for that project?
Let me share my screen right quick.
A timeline, but Sylvia, I think you're gonna show kind of a plan.
Yes.
Part of it is a natural amphitheater in here. If you can pull that down just a slightly bit, so you can see that. And we see this as a possible area for concerts and community gatherings.
This is Phil. I, I think, yes, the, the, the thought was, and again, it's up to the residents here to help us design this, but the thought was to have a live music venue there, where people could come and listen to music, whether they be residents or, or whether they be visitors to come and sit, you know, have a glass of wine from the local restaurants there and listen to music. So yes, we're trying to create a focal point, not just for our residents, but establish us more as a destination, where people will, if given a choice, they want to shop at Sunset Valley, because there's something else to do. They can do the nature trail. They can listen to music or whatever. So absolutely, we, we, we thought of that in the beginning.
Great, thank you. Do we have any more council members who want to jump in, or any of our, anybody else who's in attendance this evening?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Medikas. I haven't shared.
Hi, and before Karen speaks, could I just gently ask everybody, if you're not speaking, please mute yourself. And that way, I don't have to mute you, and you have control over your own mic. And that way, we're not getting. And that way we're not getting background noise. Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is Councilmember Medikus. When I first came here, one of your questions on the agenda was how has Sunset Valley changed? When I came here, the place that we now call the Homestead Shopping Center and the Village Shopping Center were, were single-family residential zoned. And so that was a major change in Sunset Valley that's happened. I have a different perspective, I think, a little bit in that I'm very focused on the big picture, the whole of Sunset Valley, from Westgate to Brody Lane, not just the shopping center. Many times when people talk about the shopping center, they forget that we also have a section along 290 that has the Stout House and other businesses in it. So looking at our city holistically is important to me. And while we just did vote to research this property here behind La Madeline, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't also share with you another piece of property that we own, which is called the Uplands, which is along 290 next to the Tony Burger Center, and share with you the Uplands conceptual plan that was done there that would enhance the farmer's market and provide a stage and the things that you were just asking about. So we have multiple opportunities in this community to look at, how do we enhance the whole city experience? And I think it's important for us to look at what Burger Center may be doing. There's been some conceptual discussions about performing arts center there. You know, enhancing their sports arena, bringing more people into the community there. So I think, in my mind, the retail aspect of it is looking at, what does the future hold for redevelopment of the shopping centers that are along Brody Lane? What kind of changes are we going to have to look at for what the future may look like for retail development? I think these centers are not imminently going to be redeveloped, but I don't think it's in the too far distant future that we're gonna be looking at that. And that could be very different from the way it looks right now. And so zoning may need to be changed and, and a larger concept. So the vision, where do we want to be in the future? And looking at all of our public spaces to enhance the quality of life here with more public spaces for outdoor experiences that make us sticky, especially in a, surrounded by the city of Austin that is internationally known, brings people from all over the world here, aside from COVID. But what would bring people here that we could, we could capitalize on what Austin's already doing with their chamber and their economic engine? That would make people want to come a little bit further down South Lamar and spend some time in our city and enhancing everything between Westgate and Brody Lane with art and outdoor activities while preserving our environment. So those are some of the thoughts that I have.
That's excellent. I have a quick question, this is Jeff. Is the entire area around the Burger Center, including the Burger Center, part of Sunset Valley?
The Burger Stadium is AISD property. It's in our jurisdiction, but we don't own that property.
What about the burger stadium?
That's owned by AISD.
Got it.
As is the Sunset Valley Elementary, which I understand is gonna be renovated also.
Thank you.
One of the things that we're going to ask you for is a much more detailed map of the boundaries along with the kinds of things you're talking about for future development. But just to echo what Councilwoman Medikus said, yes, our process, which I'll get into in a moment, strives to craft a vision that sees the opportunity in a holistic way. Because as things are added and as time goes on, we don't want to change Sunset Valley's unique strengths and differentiators and we don't want to alter our position. We want to craft out a position that reflects kind of our destination, our North Star, and, and, you know, diligently work towards that. So although we know things won't happen overnight, it is very important to us to hear what you have in mind for the whole picture and what's possible. Because I think it's gonna allow all of us to sort of dream bigger and to reach a little farther for ideas that will encapsulate everything that Sunset Valley is about. And not just the retail shopping experience. Although we recognize that's an extremely important part of it and it's a priority in terms of revenues, we want to slot that into the right place in the strategy. Or ultimately, what could be, I'm gonna give you an analogy, I guess. Like when people go to New York City, they say, oh, I've got to see the Empire State Building or I've got to visit Soho. We want people to be aware of Sunset Valley by name and make it a must-do on their list. And we want people in the surrounding area to make it a regular to do on their list.
Love that, thank you.
Yeah, I love it also.
Hi, Melissa, do you want to, yeah, and it sounds like maybe it's a little bit muffled.
Okay, let me try the computer.
There, that's actually, that's better. And you sound clearer now even just as you said that.
All right, so I want to echo what Councilmember Medikus said. We worked on a project together, which I think might be worth looking at, that allegedly got approved in January, on the January 7th Agenda, Agenda Item Number 8, which had some backup about the smart growth. And it was all about, you know, creating the product of Sunset Valley. And, and, and I, and we both thought that this needed to happen before we started doing the selling. And that's what we were talking about in the unique selling point and why, you know, we made such an issue about that during the conversation as we were bringing you guys on board. Because we really do think there needs to be some real clear development, as you were saying, of the product before we sell. Because we don't want to have to rebrand, resell. That would be a mistake and a waste of money. And so when I came here, just to talk about how we used to be to how we are, what was so wonderful about being in Sunset Valley was you were sort of stepping back in time and it was calm and peaceful and rural. And it was just restful compared to the rest of Austin. And it still is, but not as much, so much focus on that as what we first got here. You know, we didn't have as many shopping centers when I got here. And we were still developing, the Villas wasn't here, Meadows wasn't here yet. So those were all things. And so you had large acres, large acres where there was horses everywhere, you know, we had donkeys in the field. That was what we were. And, and it was, it was a thing that attracted a lot of us who were longtime residents to stay here for most of our lives and raise our children here and all those things. And, and I think of it Sunset Valley as the L, starting at the Uplands and then wrapping all the way down to essentially Lowes. And all of that space, that L-shaped space, is our public space. Also the trails, depending on how much people feel about that. But definitely starting to make markings. And when I travel, I've been taking photographs for all these years of what makes cities cities. And I wish we had spent more time on planters and benches and lights and things that say, you are now in Sunset Valley. And we did this, we did this even in, on South First. You know, we did funky art on all of our utility boxes. And those are the kinds of things that say, you are in a different space. You're not on South Congress, you're on South First. And this is the way that we're doing our art piece from the river. You know, our tagline was "South the River, Center Cool." And, and, you know, we worked on that and it was kind of funny because they tried to steal that for Sunset Valley, more or less at one point with the marketing firm. And, 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 you know, we became number eight in that. And it was just, you know, it was pretty funky when I moved in there. I took my business there in, I don't know, 2003, 2004 was when I took one of the lead buildings there. And so, you know, crafting a neighborhood and getting those feelings and getting all the merchants involved in what you want the public spaces to look like. And, you know, when we, in Austin, when we started, you know, putting guitars everywhere and those kinds of things that say, hey, you're in a different place. And so what do we want to do? And each, and Austin created, you know, energy for each little neighborhood to be special. And we, and I was a founding member of the Austin Independent Business Alliance. And so, you know, creating, it isn't, Home Goods isn't special in the way that Cruz-Teca is special, in the way that Docs is special. Those are the kinds of things that say, you're somewhere and not just anywhere USA, that you can see these things in a million places. And so attracting small businesses that can only be found here. Those are the kinds of things that help make your space. But also the markers that you say, hey, you know, I'm actually talking to you from Rito's in New Mexico right now and we were in Roswell. And they do funky things there, where the alien capital of the world. And it looks like their elementary, it is not a successful execution. It looks like their elementary school has done all their art. It's pretty awful, actually. But it's very successful in that, you know, even, even all their hotels have little aliens there saying, hey, come, 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 come register here, earthling, you know? And it just, it becomes the piece and, and everybody's involved in the piece. And I don't know, I like the idea of it being sort of still a rural-based piece while we still have those kinds of things. You know, we had the donkeys, we have art projects for that. The things that make it a place where you feel warm and friendly and welcome. Warm lighting, those kinds of things. So, and planters. And those are the things that really say, this particular brand. And having some guidance on those kinds of things really help with a sense of the brand and the place. So that's a feel that I would like to escalate, thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez, we would agree with you wholeheartedly on that. That's actually a great segue into one of the other questions we had, which we've heard rumors that there have been discussions about further defining the boundaries of Sunset Valley and maybe creating some structures that let you know you are entering now into Sunset Valley as well as just additional signage. So we were wondering really quickly, is there any new news on that? Or is that still just sort of a vague idea that's floating around out there?
Talking about banners, the delineation of Sunset Valley with the banners?
Well, and anything, yes, the banners and anything else that might have been discussed that's, that's more than a banner or something that's actually more structural in nature? No, nothing has progressed and you, it'd be great if something did happen, but I don't think you should count on anything because it would require community input, community approval and money. And the, we just approved a budget and so there's nothing in the upcoming fiscal year budget that relates to, for example, building something on the Uplands, which the year that we get there, that would be very exciting for whoever, for you guys or whoever's our marketing firm. Because then you get to have something that's new that becomes sort of an entrance anchor of the city. And hopefully we do do something there that, you know, the best idea that I've heard is doing something there that is a farm-to-table restaurant and where the restaurant feeds into a boutique hotel and where there could potentially be some minimal shopping, something like that. Again, going to the idea that if you were traveling to Austin, you might say to yourself, hey, while we're in Austin, we gotta go to this place. And then I would like to dovetail that into my answer to your previous question, which last night I was with my husband and we were walking the Commodore Perry Project. And for any of you who aren't familiar with that, it's up north and it's a historic family site that's adjacent to a golf course and it's entered, or it's just recently opened its first phase of hotel, private club. And as we're walking the property and he's telling me the history, it is an example, as I was walking, I was like, this has got to be one of the most beautiful things I've seen in Austin, but it's also new. And it's also, clearly they've developed and put money into positioning themselves to be, also using the term Karen used, they're trying to be sticky. They're trying to make it so that they are a site that any person coming into Austin would say, don't stay downtown, come stay here, it's beautiful. It's, it's different and it's worth visiting, whether it's just for dinner or to stay in their hotel. And I really, the potential in Sunset Valley, the future, also to the point Karen made, we oftentimes focus on our existing shopping centers. But there is a future yet to be seen of development and redevelopment that's going to occur on Brody Lane, also on 290. I also would love to be able to look into a crystal ball and see what's gonna happen on Country White Lane because it's in the ETJ, it's on Septic. I wonder will it, you know, flip and become mega mansions? Or will some mega buck developer come in and buy out the whole street and turn it into some sort of a commercial development in the future? Those are things we just, we don't know. We don't know the future of what will happen. But I think that we'd be naive to think that it's not gonna keep changing at a very rapid pace now just based on other stuff that's happening in Austin.
And is it possible to highlight on the map that we see on the screen where that area is?
So the Uplands is on the screen, so that's the yellow square that's over to the left. And then the one that's in the middle, that's what we, some of us refer to as the Homestead property. And then as you come down Brody Lane, Country White is sort of the end point of where our city is. It's another end cap. And then one other thing that hasn't been mentioned yet that I think would be of importance to you all is Violet Crown Trail. Eventually, we will have a trailhead that's on one side of 290, just before you enter our city. And their next trailhead that they will phase in is going to be at the end of Home Depot Boulevard. And so our little city will be able to say, you know, at some point, we'll be able to say, if you're on the Violet Crown Trail, you could technically hike from Barton Springs Pool. So you could go from downtown, hike the Violet Crown Trail, come out in Sunset Valley, come through our shopping center and then you're at the next trailhead, which is the trailhead that will go out towards Lady Bird Johnson Wildflower Center. So we certainly want at some point to make sure that we market off of that and that we include that aspect, especially because it's public trail. So for residents who worry that the private areas, their backyards and the trail connections that are close to people's private residences, I think anything we can do as a city to brand ourselves to the Violet Crown Trail is also helpful to that concern that some residents have, which is, we want to bring people to the city, but we don't necessarily want to bring people into people's, into the residents' backyard. You just answered my last question, which was, what is the residents' tolerance for outsiders on the trails? We're gonna make an effort to go walk some of the trails, but it is very helpful to know that there are public versus private, so to speak, and ones that you would want to prioritize in marketing. But we would like to get a firsthand experience of the trails. I've been shopping in Sunset Valley for 20 years and I don't know that I knew until I got to know Jose Canales better that there were trails there. So that is, that is very much a hidden gem thing. But obviously, there's certain trails that we, we don't want to make public. And so that would be a very interesting exercise, I think, to engage in.
Is it possible to highlight the White Lane area?
Oh, the Country White. And the other, just as other councilmembers were talking, the notes that I jotted down, just things that would be worth you guys looking into, I agree. I think it's Councilwoman Rosengarden. I think we underutilize the Brody Homestead, which is a very, if we were looking not for new construction, but if we were looking, what's, what's an existing thing that is the most unique thing that also can be a visitor draw? And by visitor, I mean somebody who's potentially coming here from, say, New York City. And that would be the Brody Event Center. So I would do, would love to see us connect more with that location. The Ross family owns it, they've spent a lot of money to maintain it and they're motivated to keep spending money on it since it's primarily used as a wedding venue. So they're motivated to, you know, have it be beautiful inside and out since that's where brides do their photography.
Hey, Rose, this is Rob. I, I just have one question about kind of the process here and kind of like suggestions. So I, I recognize all the undeveloped pieces of land that we have that are kind of like on the table to kind of like see a whole vision of where Sunset Valley, Sunset Valley is going. I, I know that there's like three different shopping centers or management company or whatever. How much, how much can we do to kind of like spiff those areas up? And how much should that be in the kind of view that we put in? Because those buildings are, I guess, about 20 years old or whatever and they're kind of showing their age a little bit. And I think they definitely, when I go to shop in other kind of commercial districts outside of Sunset Valley, they just, they feel very fresh and, and new. And I come back over here and it's just like, there's a lot of really great stores, but sometimes I feel like there's, it's just like, I'm not very engaged. But sometimes I feel like there's, it's just like, I'm not very engaged or excited by the state of some of the buildings. Do you know what I mean?
No, exactly what you mean. I think many people agree. Cindy, Jeff, you may be able to actually educate us. My experience, um, has been because we're not the owners. Um, and the owners, most of them are out of state, um, so they're incentivized by rent. And so they will put as much into spiffing them up as their very high end anchors demand. So when Nordstrom Rack came in, when Total Wine came in, when Academy came in, they may have enough pull through the value of their lease to to lean on the owners and say, we want, you know, whether it's signage or restriping of the parking lot, more plants, something. But Rob, my experience has been that our city doesn't have much ultimate leverage to demand or requests, unless we're going to just throw our own money at it to to do things. And Cindy and Jeff, I don't know if you guys have anything you can offer to that.
Um, yeah, we would concur with what you're saying. So the good news is that, um, Jose and his team have worked directly with the people at Academy. Total Wine is actually one of our accounts.
One of our current.
One of our current clients.
The national account.
Yeah, and we work with them all the time. So one of the things we want to do in our discovery process, which is this is probably a great way into the segue into the discussion about dynamic insight. But one of the things we'd like to do is do some in-depth interviews with the store managers at the key anchor locations throughout Sunset Valley. And what we'll be doing there is kind of probing them for not just how they see their contribution in in Sunset Valley and what goals they have as a business, but also what their, where their willingness is to sort of be all in. And I think the key to to leveraging their influence to help sort of give, um, a a little bit of a facelift to a shopping center is absolutely key. So the owner of the center, the developer of the center usually will come back around and, um, consider adding more walkways and patios and rethinking those things. You know, when a key, um, anchor saying, we, we need this in order to meet our goals. So that is absolutely part of what we want to talk to them about and just get sort of take the temperature and see how they're feeling about it. But we also want to talk to some of the businesses that you mentioned that are absolutely unique. I think on the one hand, Sunset Valley has some very credible and reliable retailers that lots of people love to shop with. You guys already mentioned a few of them. Kohl's comes to mind, um, you know, uh, Ross, uh, Michaels, Total Wine, all of that. They're not unique, though. They're big boxes. And so on the one hand, there's a convenience factor, uh, because you've got a great retailer right there around the corner. On the other hand, you guys have some really unique retailers, one of a kind, local mom and pop places. And so we really want to get a good list from you all. And that that will be a homework assignment is to give us a list of people to talk to that represent both the anchors that can wield their influence and the smaller moms and pops that are completely unique.
I I have a question, those lines, if I may. This is, this is Phil again. When, when we were in the worst part of the COVID lockdown, it it was obvious that the good news was our sales tax revenue didn't decrease as much as thought it could. The bad news was, I I think, is the fact that we, we're, our, we, our sales tax revenue has been carried by a handful of stores. And it's no surprise that they have. It's Home Depot, it's Academy, it's Total Wine and probably Kohl's. And diversification i- is tough, I think, when these, these players, the big box stores dominate so much of the marketplace. I I think it's important to talk to the managers of these stores. But how do you get through the fact, if you go to the manager of Home Depot, his response, because I've tried this, uh, you may have a different attract, you may be much more successful, I've been on. He will say, I can't talk, you have to call, to talk to corporate. Academy will be the same way, I think, and Kohl's will be the same way. How do you pierce that corporate veil to get the information that is very pertinent for what we can do?
Unmute there? Okay, um, that's, yeah, that's a problem. It's always a challenge. I think there are two ways to get past the local gatekeeper. Now, they're not going to share, um, sales data with us. They're not going to share financial information. But what they will share is their desire to be a leader among their group. So most regions have, um, programs that they allow local managers to get involved in. And it's a fairly simple process to go through a promotional procedure where they can turn around and say, you know what? I've, I've got a unique opportunity to sponsor this art walk. Or, hey, there's something coming up here in Sunset Valley that we, um, at this particular store would really like to get involved in with this community. And so they can, they can apply for for promotional funds to do that. And that usually is a door opener. So what they will do is they will start off small. They'll say, hey, we're not just following the national template here. We'd, we'd like to add a layer of local promotion. And we're doing that in cooperation with these goals that the city has. And we want to be key in that effort. And so we need your support. And then when they start getting a little bit of recognition for what they're doing, that's when you get the regional manager involved and then the national marketing director involved. So it it doesn't necessarily happen overnight. Sometimes we get lucky, like with Total Wine, we can go straight to the national people. You know, and Academy may be the same thing, but, um, some of the other retailers, it will have to get a little more creative.
So this is Jeff. Um, I probably would answer that slightly differently. I wanted the steps outside of their role as the manager of Academy and talking to me from the point of view of Academy. And instead, what I would ask them is how they can help us understand how Sunset Valley and what Sunset Valley does can help them. And if that door opens, it's an obstacle. Don't get me wrong. We, we won't get everyone being freely open and sharing with us what they think. But I think over time, we'll get a few nods and a few doors to open that can help provide some insight. I'm not really interested, um, in what Academy thinks. I'm interested in what that local person experiences running a store in Sunset Valley. So, um, we'll have to see how that develops. But as Cindy says, um, some of our background will allow us to get some doors to open and we'll gather as much information as possible. The other thing I would say is everything that they say to us will remain confidential in a research mode. So we may get some nuggets and some insights, but we won't, uh, say that it's the manager of Academy or the manager of Home Depot. It'll simply be one of the, the people working in one of the stores in Sunset Valley, said X, Y, or Z.
But if we can get them personally or emotionally invested in their store doing better, we, we do have a better chance of them willing to sort of think outside of the box and not just follow the, the, whatever the national or the regional plan is that they're handed.
Those are very good points. And speaking of what people say, may I ask you, you know, once you, you knew that you had got us an account, I'm sure you talked to people, can you share with us any feedback you got when you said, hey, I'm now going to be handling the account for Sunset Valley? Can you share with us what reactions were, even if they're, you know, off the top reactions from the people? Yeah.
Yes, this is Jeff, and you'll, you'll find over the period of time, I cut right to the chase. But the first reaction I got from a handful of people, where's Sunset Valley? The second thing after I told them where Sunset Valley was, oh, the store's over at Brody Lane.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there appears to be a name ID problem. People tend to refer to it as Brody Lane, or they'll say, I'm going shopping over on Brody Lane. If you remind them that it's Sunset Valley, they go, oh, yeah, I, I. But, but, but the tendency is for them to not call it Sunset Valley by name. It's not as top of mind as it could be. So that, that's fixable, though.
And let me say, I also talked to a couple of the business people. Because Cindy and I, we live off 290 and Sunset, or, uh, I'm sorry, 290 and Fitz You. But our office is over off Mopac and 360. So I pop over to you guys pre-COVID all the time. And so Fire Bowl, obviously Total Wine, Barnes and Noble, and Academy and Home Depot. And so some of the folks in those stores I've gotten to know, and I mentioned to one of them that we were doing work and they were really excited and appreciative. And so I think some doors will open, but there will be some doors that will close down. But I would say the boundaries of where Sunset Valley is and how you're really predominantly identified as Brody Lane shopping is is probably one of the obstacles we have to overcome.
And I think that's why we were asking questions about the, uh, you know, defining the boundaries a little bit more. I think the, the, knowing it as Sunset Valley, the, as residents or, uh, tangent residents, people who are near Sunset Valley or grew up there or have, you know, a long-term exposure to the area, kind of know it. But, uh, Austin is becoming more and more transient, uh, and and people coming in from from other cities. And it it's not clear that it's kind of a city within a city. And people, you know, the Brody Lane has much more awareness, uh, and branding, I think, than Sunset Valley. And so I think that's one of the things that we talk about is identify, like, building the brand of Sunset Valley and try, like, wanting to find ways to to do that, that would be, that would be very obvious to people who are not living here or living around here, but just kind of passing through.
Yeah, I, I, I think the only thing, the only thing that's possibly worse, some people not knowing where Sunset Valley is, is those people who insist they shop at Sunset Valley constantly. And because they shop at Walmart, Best Buy, or Target, which are not in Sunset Valley. You know, that's, you know, I've had lots of friends who come in from Lakewood and say, I am always shopping at Sunset Valley. I'm a regular Target, I'm a regular Best Buy, and we're not, they're not our stores. So the, the, you know, the delineation of where Sunset Valley is, i- i- is to your point that you made very early on, is vitally important, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of the flip side of the coin, you know, one is headed, one is tails, isn't it? They think they're there, not. They, they think they're supporting the community and they're, they're not necessarily doing what they think they're doing. So, um, well, in in the interest of, um, moving through our agenda and getting out of here uh, in time to all go do other things, including watch the debate. Does anyone else want to add to this conversation right now? And, uh, if not, I'm, I'm going to take you guys through Dynamic Insight real quick.
Um, our CED chair wanted to, she got kicked off or is muted or something, I'm not sure. She wanted to talk about an idea of, um, lit trees in the perimeter of Sunset Valley in the evenings, letting people know they've reached, um, Sunset Valley or something similar.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Oh, that was the idea. She's off of the call right now.
Oh, okay, she's not on. Okay, great. All right, I will take a note to that.
I have one last thing that didn't get mentioned. And I, I just, I just think one of the things that that's really significant about Sunset Valley, we really haven't talked about, is how extraordinary our police force is and and how, um, the, the people who who shop here are, 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 feel, I think, feel a lot more safe. And the people who have stores here don't even ha- uh, have their own security. That's, you know, other than some of the internal. It's, but you, they don't have, you don't see it, like, if you even go to Central, to, um, Central Market, you see people, uh, who are, you know, working for for the stores for that property. And we don't have that in Sunset Valley. And that's, that, that's a credit to how great our police force is. And so I think that's just, um, not the thing that we, that we should, um, necessarily highlight in a, in a marketing thing. But it does speak to a lot to the place and 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 the accessibility of, uh, parking here. Those, those things are both really significant differentiators in terms of, uh, shopping. I'll let that go.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I was actually at Home Depot the other day and, um, a Sunset Valley police car was there and I noted it mentally because they were, they were standing there outside of the store, talking with some people. And someone drove up and they waved and they clearly knew one another. And it just, it gave me pause, like, oh, these are the community police and these are residents and they actually recognize each other by sight and know each other by name. And that was, that was pretty cool.
And to follow, to follow up on, um, whoever did the last call. For anybody who's on this call, if you didn't get a chance to speak to any of the stuff that's been asked so far, would you please? Um, I've now muted, um, all of our, uh, residents and elected officials. Would you please raise your hand if you did want to speak and you didn't get a chance? And that way we make sure not to exclude, uh, anybody from the public who may have been here this evening who wanted to say something. And Melissa, uh, so I have a few notes as I've been listening to everybody that maybe didn't get hit and I can go through them very quick. What Melissa just brought up about safety, that was on my list to mention. One thing that people may not realize when they're driving through South Austin, but the homeless camps stop at Sunset Valley. That's something that I think in the next 12 months, as we come out of COVID and we're looking at, um, people feeling more comfortable coming out to go shopping, that does help Sunset Valley, that our two underpasses don't have, um, the panhandling and the tents. And for me, the biggest issue is not the camps, it's the trash that they generate. And so as a city, we're also working hard. In fact, I noticed it today, we need to get people out on the street to do trash pickup again. Um, and when it gets really bad, we do resident volunteer trash pickup along the highway. Um, and again, that might not be something that somebody necessarily says when they think about why they want to shop in our city. But I think that as development continues to push south and push up, um, that will be important. Uh, the commercial residential, I mean, sorry, the commercial development on 290 side of West Gate is sort of a sleeper shopping center. It's another one that I think in the next 15 years, you'll see that entire shopping center, uh, flip and get redeveloped, potentially go higher. Um, the Central Market Shopping Center, I think, you know, we will see changes there. There's more and more residential coming up, um, of owners that you should talk to that were mentioned tonight. The Ross family that owns the, uh, Weaver Family Homestead and the barn. Um, also the owners of 4715. So that's Daryl Kunig, who's part of the Uchi Group and also does a lot of development over on the east side. I think he would be an important, um, stakeholder for you guys to talk to, mainly because those are two owners that are also local Austinites who are also very invested in what makes Austin work. I think those are also two people that if you speak to them, it'll be very easy for you to get to the owner or the owner's rep and ask them, what is Sunset Valley doing wrong? And they won't, it, it'll be very easy for you to get those answers from those two owners. And 4715, oh, the farmer's market, I think there was a very brief mention of that. But I do think the more that we can do to connect that to the branding of our city, the trail, all of that. I mean, I really think that that's something that we could, if we could get the farmer's market to be bigger and better, to have a permanent pavilion building, something similar or better to what Mueller has done up north. Um, and eventually, as I've said, I believe in public meetings, what I would love would be for us to have the best farmer's market and for it to also be the farmer's market that all of the restaurants want to do their purchasing through. So going to the idea that if you're coming in from out of town on a weekend, it just becomes synonymous with visiting Austin, is you've got to go to the Sunset Valley Farmer's Market because it's just, it, it's worth putting on your list of things to do. And I'm looking now to see if there's any hands raised. I don't see any. So I'm going to let Amber stand, I'll let you guys take back over.
Okay, um, whoever's controlling the screen, could we put the agenda back up real quick, if you have it handy? So what I'm going to do is take you guys through, um, just a, a high level overview of our Dynamic Insights process. So we developed this process about 20 years ago. And we've used it quite successfully ever since. It incorporates a lot of things that those of you who've had some marketing or advertising experience might recognize, but often with additional layers or a different twist. So it's a three-part process that we use with every client. And if we diligently commit to it and go through the steps together, I guarantee you that there will be epiphany moments, there will be forks in the road where we're forced to choose which, which route are we going to take. But ultimately, this is a process that leads us to a very focused, very refined place that we can all agree on and buy into in terms of what are our priorities, what are our goals, what's our vision and what are our next steps? What are our goals? What's our vision and what are our next steps? So in phase one, which we call discovery, we're going to go through a few exercises together. And as I mentioned, Alex is going to take you through the questionnaire, which is kind of how we kick off the process. But it starts with a marketing questionnaire and then we go into almost immediately target audience identification. And so far, it appears before really having deep dived into this, that we have two constituents, so to speak, two target audiences that we really need to, to do some swats on. And a SWAT is an analysis of the city's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Now, that may not sound all that unique, but what we do when we SWAT something is we do it through the lens of the target audience. So let's say that one audience might be residents and another audience might be shoppers from the surrounding area. And maybe there's even a third audience, visitors, like you said, people who are visiting family or friends in other neighborhoods or visiting Austin on vacation. And we want to be a must-do on their list. Well, we're going to take you through this process of really profiling them and drilling down pretty deep, be way, well beyond just demographics and psychographics, to look at what we know about Sunset Valley and how it might be relevant and appealing to them. So we're going to ask all the questions in the SWAT through the prism of relevance. So in other words, you can't say something is a strength for Sunset Valley if that particular target segment that we're swatting together would not view it as a strength. It kind of requires you to put on your consumer hat and to try to see things from that particular target audience member's point of view and only put the strongest strengths and the most unique differentiators as it applies to them. And so one of the things that typically happens during that process is that we'll, we'll go through sort of a weeding out of, well, what's in it for me question? You know, because people tend not to see things as strengths unless there's some benefit for them. So that will be one of our first meetings after we get some additional information from you and we get the questionnaire back from you. And then we're going to talk to you about surrounding areas that might be viewed as competitors. So for example, Westlake or Hill Country Galleria or the Triangle or the Domain, or even Buda. Buda has a pretty good facility for Farmers Markets. And this might be of interest to you guys, but my sister actually, my sister and brother-in-law have a microgreens business and they sell at the Barton Creek Farmers Market. So they're very plugged into that community and I'm pretty familiar with it. We'll deep dive into all the things that we consider competition. And we will put together what's called a competitive audit. And what that's going to do is allow us to see from a messaging point of view how other destinations that are competing for people's time and attention might be positioning themselves and marketing themselves. And what's valuable about that is that we do not want to look like or sound like anyone else. If we mistakenly develop something that feels too much like what a competitor is doing, the person who has more money or who has been doing it longer or who did it first will inevitably get credit in the mind of the target audience. And that speaks directly to the stickiness, I love that word, we use it all the time, that you guys were talking about earlier. So we are basically looking for both tangible and intangible attributes that we can cull down into the best list and then amplify those things in our strategy and in our creativity. And those, those exercises with competitors and with SWATs are, are a critical part of phase one. While that is going on, we're going to ask you to help us put that list of contacts together for the anchors, for the unique businesses. For example, people like the Rosses to talk to, to the owners of Homestead, et cetera. Anybody who has influence and input that can help us craft that bigger picture will want to talk to while we're doing some of these, these exercises with you. And then we'll do something called Positioning Continuums. That typically comes after Competitive Audit. That is an exercise that allows us to start to see how we would score Sunset Valley on several attributes along a continuum. And it's, it's, if you imagine a line from left to right and a number, numbering system from one to 10, we'll plot out where we fall on these different continuums. So we have a visual of, of where we stand. And we'll look at that in, in comparison to our Competitive Audit. We'll also potentially do a survey. We don't know yet. We'll have to circle back with you guys and see how you want to proceed as far as getting residents' input, but there'll be some process for that as well. And that will happen while Dynamic Insight is unfolding. And then as we go into the sort of final phase of Dynamic Insight, yes, there it is. We will be making some additional inquiries that really get us to a place where we can start to talk about the personality and the tone of the Sunset Valley brand. And I believe it was Melissa who, who mentioned this before. That is so important. Are we going to be quirky? And if the answer is yes, you know, it might express itself in some unique art, art objects, like, like she was discussing for South Austin. But, but what is the tone and the personality of Sunset Valley? What is our position going to be? What are our unique strengths, differentiators, and attributes? And we're going to coalesce all of that into a strategic recommendation that sets us up to then develop a creative brief. So we'll go through all of these different exercises together. It will take probably six weeks from start to finish to do. And then that will take us into phase two of all of this, which is the Creative Development Process. And that is where Jose and his team will take the strategy proposed, the media plan proposed, the research that we've done during Dynamic Insight, the creative brief. And we will start to develop ideas for campaigns. We'll do concept statements. And then once we've sort of narrowed down what we think are some, some very strong concepts, which we'll present to you, we will then start to work toward expressing those artistically. What does that look like? What does that feel like? What does that sound like? What unique colors or illustration styles or photographic techniques could we really apply here that makes Sunset Valley come alive in a way that doesn't feel or look like anyone else? That process will take typically about six weeks from start to finish. We want to give the creative team time to explore and to sort of push the boundaries. And as Jose said earlier, his studio, his whole team is really known for creating something from nothing, which is great because it's absolutely authentic and custom to you. It is, is not off-the-shelf creative. It is organic and responsive to who you are and it's based on your DNA. So this process is designed to uncover that and lead to this Creative Development Phase that bears fruit based on who you guys truly are.
This is Jeff. It takes six weeks, depending on your schedules, because this is not a process that we go off and develop thinking separate from you. We will be working with you and depending on the schedule of being able to meet with you, it takes roughly about six weeks, but give or take on the schedule, it could take five weeks or it could take seven or eight weeks. Again, scheduling will just have to be worked out.
Right. And because we're going into the holiday season, we have to work around those dates too. Obviously, people's availability changes.
But our goal is to try to get this all done between now and Thanksgiving, if that's possible. If it's not possible, then we just work with the reality of the schedule.
Right. And then I was going to mention, again, I think it was Melissa who mentioned having worked with GSDNM before, and our paths may have actually crossed in the past because I worked with the City Austin on the development of the Second Street District and the Warehouse District, and this is going to date me. But back when there was a local jazz festival, I actually worked on that. But people often ask us, who are you most like in terms of ad agencies? And I would have to say that the answer to that is GSDNM and to some degree also McGarrett Jesse because we truly believe that what makes brands great, what makes people loyal to them and gravitate toward them, are things that get at your higher purpose, the, the why you exist, not just what you have to offer and not just how you do what you do. I think a lot of advertising that falls short focuses on the how and the what and never really answers the why. So I'll just go ahead and warn you guys now, we're sort of like that four-year-old in the backseat going, are we there yet? Are we there yet? Are we there yet? We're not going to ask, are we there yet? But we are going to ask about a million times, why is that? You'll find that, that people kind of have a rote answer and they start to answer one way. And then you have to dig a little deeper and look at the why piece. So heads up, we'll be asking a lot about the why.
And let me mention, Sylvia, we dropped off six copies of Roy Spence's book, It's Not What You Do, it's what you, I'm sorry, Not What You Sell, It's What You Stand For, which is a book that came out after we had started our Dynamic Insight process. And there were parallel thinking lines and Roy wrote a book. He's the, one of the founding members and former CEO in GSDNM. We dropped that off because it helps clients understand what branding and purpose-based branding is all about. So some of you will read it and underline and ask us questions about it. We love that. Others may skip around, but it is an extremely valuable book, easy read with some great examples about purpose-based branding.
Yeah.
How you get to the why.
We left six copies today with your superintendent over at Maintenance and he was going to take them to someone named Tanya. So Sylvia, if you haven't seen them yet or found them, I believe Tanya has them. And I highly recommend that every member of council pick up their copy and take a look at it if you want to know how we think.
They were delivered already. If I could ask if you could ship one more to me, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. You've got a Barnes and Noble right in the, the city boundaries.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get one over to you.
Well, and then just to wrap up Dynamic Insight, when we come out of the Creative Development Phase, we're going to present to you some campaign options. And then you guys as a team are going to look at the strategy proposed, the media plan proposed, and then the creative design to fit that. And hopefully both deliver completely on strategic value. And so it just comes down at that point to which do you like best? And you'll, you'll pick a concept and then from there we'll go into production. So that's how the process works. I know I said a lot in a very short period of time, but I want to get to the questionnaire and the timeline real quick. So you have an idea of what your homework is. And then we all have a debate to watch, I believe.
Yes. So Cindy, I will take it from here. So the marketing questionnaire, like she said, it's a five-page document. So Cindy was saying, yes, we're going to be asking a lot of questions. Well, this is the first example of that. And it covers a lot of questions first related to any goals that you've all have set. I don't believe that we've sent this document over, but I really enjoyed and I think the team would agree, just listening to y'all, you know, share your vision for, you know, where is, what, where was Sunset Valley before and where is it headed? And all of these questions will inform our creative in developing the Sunset Valley brand and as well as our media plan. So all of this is going to be very fruitful to us. And there are some topics in here that we're asking for specific reports. And one of those is a sales tax revenue report. And so that's going to be important. So you'll see that notated here. So there's a couple of like, not only is it the document, but some requests for some reports. There is a section dedicated to, you know, how has COVID-19 impacted Sunset Valley? And, and I, I know y'all touched on that a little bit. So we are very interested in that, especially because that's the new reality. There is a section for target audiences and y'all can look through that. We, we've defined it, just not knowing much, as residents and shoppers and visitors. So we will want to deep dive into that and know if you guys have any research that you've all done for that. And then there is a section for value. The value section is just talking about if you guys have a statement of core values and then talking about, you know, what other kind of businesses and people would you like to attract? And then Cindy mentioned the SWATs. So we will actually dedicate a whole meeting to a SWAT analysis based on the targeted, target audiences you identify. And then there's also another section for the competitors. Like Cindy said, we will be doing a competitive audit and we want to make sure that we are not sounding or looking the same as any of our people in, in the competition. And then last but not least, there's a couple more sections. One of them is about retail partnerships and promotional assets. And so, and that kind of ties in and lends itself to any kind of events that, annual events that drive traffic to Sunset Valley that already happened and some that you plan to happen. And then there is a marketing activation section and a kind of a performance section that talks about KPIs. And then some questions we really are interested in knowing, which is, you know, the single biggest success of past marketing initiatives and also the single, single biggest failure in terms of marketing for Sunset Valley. So I know that was a lot. It was a very, very high-level overview of some of the questions in there. But the goal would be, we do want to get this as one consolidated document back to us. And we have in the timeline when we'd like to receive. We want to give you some time to spend with it, but we'll let you guys decide how's the best way to go about it. It might be best if some people fill it out and then send it to one person and then that person's in charge of kind of consolidating it all. And then once we have a chance to review it before, before a meeting, we can kind of highlight if we have any questions about some of your answers. Does that make any sense or any questions about that?
This is Cindy here. I, I think what we're going to do is Sylvia, after this meeting, we will send you the questionnaire. And then we will let you get with the council and/or the mayor and decide how you want to distribute that and then how you want to collect feedback and pass it back to us. But I believe there's a two-week turnaround, if I'm not mistaken, in the timeline right now, which Emily's going to share with us next.
Yes, that is correct. So that questionnaire will be due back to us in a couple of weeks. After we meet today, I will send y'all a fairly in-depth timeline that breaks out week by week, what everything we're going to be doing looking, looks like. So that's everything from the onboarding process to Dynamic Insights, the different components of Dynamic Insights that we'll be doing for each week in those sort of work sessions, as well as what the process looks like for building out our media strategy, research, creative development, and then any sort of ongoing meetings, calls, budget management, things like that. And this is a week-by-week timeline. We've noted when each council meeting is, so we all have that for reference. And we've built this timeline out through January, sort of when we see creative development starting and that process launching. And then once we get closer to that, we can continue to build out that timeline. So we're all on the same page. Alex or Jeff and Cindy, is there anything regarding the timeline that I might have missed?
No, I don't think so. I think it's, it's going to be easier for, for you guys to see when you see it as a visual. It's a flow chart that was built in Excel. So I would say when you get it, this is a rough estimation right now of what we would like to see happen. But obviously, your availability with each other in between meetings and then of course, as a group, for us to have these kinds of work sessions together. And then specifically. And then specific dates where we'll wanna present something at a formal city council meeting, those can all be tweaked. So we would love some feedback after you get a look at it of when you think meetings are possible and if it looks like it's gonna be tight or you think that we need to adjust, let Sylvia know and we will work directly with Sylvia because we also have a weekly status meeting with her, which is just a quick 30-minute meeting once a week to, to just get the sort of housekeeping things done. So it's like, oh, this is coming up next, we need this homework back by this date, our next meeting agenda is due on such-and-such date, if we have materials to present, we need to get them to you all to review in advance by X date. Those kinds of things will be happening in the weekly status. But all the real work and all of the decisions and the ideation and the collaboration will be happening in, in meetings like this one, in work sessions together. So that's what you can expect. Alrighty then, to wrap this up, we will be sending over the marketing questionnaire to Sylvia. And as Alex mentioned, we would love for y'all to get together and discuss that and give us some consolidated answers. What we're trying to avoid is six or seven different questionnaires coming back with six or seven different opinions and six or seven different marching orders. So we wanna try to get to a place where everyone agrees, yeah, that's probably the right answer for that. And then any sales tax reports or information, that is also something that we're asking for between now and our next work session and then that official boundary map. If we could get a copy of that as well.
And I might add, sales tax or bed tax revenue that the municipality receives.
Yeah, I, we don't need a lot of
We'll provide it all in a breakdown.
Great, great. Awesome.
Top winnow.
All right. Well, unless you guys have something else, I believe that does it for this evening with, with eight minutes to spare. So does anyone have anything? If not, I'll hand it back to the mayor.
So I'll probably create a SharePoint for them so they can kind of see what each other is entering and so we don't have a lot of the same duplication. I'm sorry, that was redundant, the same duplication, I'm tired. But then I'll also share the site with you guys so that we, you can see as it develops.
Okay, great. Yeah, live document would be
Do we have any, if there's anybody in the room who has a question before we adjourn, if you'd please raise your hand. And then Cindy, is there anything else you needed to say to wrap up before I close the meeting?
No ma'am, not right now. I think we're good.
Otherwise, we're very excited.
Yeah, except thank you for your time.
So are we and I hope we can meet. Thank you for coming up with such a clear timeline. I feel like the ball is now in our court to, to step up and to, you know, to make sure that we show up and have meetings and get our, get the information that you need so that you can do your job. So I hope we can meet the challenge that you've given us.
Great, well, thank you so much.
Excellent.
Thank you. And so with that, I will call the meeting and we're closing the meeting at 7:53. Thank you, everybody, for attending and thank you Ampersand and Canales for coming prepared and getting us out in time for the debate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone. Bye-bye.